Let's start tonight's meeting of the Harris Township Planning Commission, July 19th, 2021. First time back together. Thank you all for being flexible over the last few months. We got a few things done by Zoom. It wasn't quite the same, but we got stuff done. And I think it was good to have the flexibility to continue doing the stuff that we need to do, using the tech at hand. So, anyone have comments on the minutes? And if not, how about a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion of the, was May, yes? May meeting minutes? Okay, all those in favor of approving the minutes? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Public comment, anyone here from the public who is going to comment on something not on the agenda tonight? We're all agenda focused, okay. Tonight's agenda, we got a number of things on here, as you can see. Some will be quick, some may be a little more detail oriented, and we can even be looking at next month's agenda. Any comments on the agenda? Prove, motion to approve the agenda as it's written?
So moved.
Bob, thank you. Second? Thank you, Amy. All those in favor of approving the agenda?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are on to planning commission business. Who wants to guide us through the Bull Beer Works sketch plan?
So I will introduce the developers, Gordon and Laura Kaufman, and then they have a member who's on the Zoom, so we'll be truly hybrid on this one. And they're presenting their sketch plan tonight. This is non-binding, this is just meant to get comments from the planning commission. They'll be making a formal submission of plans to the township at a later date. So, Gordon?
Great, thanks Amy. Good evening, everybody. My name is Gordon Kaufman, this is my wife, Laura. Tim Deal, who is our civil engineer, is on the Zoom call. So, I'm excited, and it's a pleasure to be here today, to present our sketch plan for your review. I know this is an informal process, but it's my first one of these. As you might expect, Laura and I are not professional developers, but we have lived in this community for over 25 years. In talking, this has been sort of a long process. I first probably spoke to zoning officer Todd Shea and manager Amy Farkas over two years ago. And Todd, so Todd encouraged me to go through, I know that you all want to see developers go through this sketch plan process, and it made a lot of sense to us, just so that we were able to get your feedback, and again, in an informal way, and to help guide us through this process. So we're really looking forward to having a discussion this evening and hearing your thoughts about our submission. The location for this particular development project is really important to us. You'll see exactly where it is, I'm sure you know where it is, is the Bull Mansion property. It's important to us for a number of reasons. One is its proximity to Rothrock State Forest. We believe that the forest is a very important resource for this community. It also provides ample outdoor space. As you know, you know, Bob Cameron just showed up, he has built and maintains a nice trail network through there, so that's really important to us. In addition, it's in the center, it's in the center of town, it's close to the Diamond, it's across the street from the Military Museum, and near the farmer's market, you know, on Tuesdays. So those are all things that are really important. Plus, all that green space and the views associated with it, we're at the base of Bald Knob Bridge and Bald Knob and views of the church, and so the view shed is really beautiful, and that's really important to us. This project is really more something that I have wanted. It's been in my mind for five years plus. It's going to be, the goal here is to design a place that's, a place for like-minded people to gather and spend time together, that have a passion for outdoor recreation, specifically cycling. I'm a cyclist, and that's important to me. But I'm envisioning creating like a grassroots culture there that's focused on outdoor adventure, the environment, and the community. And like I said before, we've lived here for a long time. I want this, I think my friends will want it, and I really think that the community will put their arms around it as well. So, with that, I just wanted to remind everybody about the cultural district and the intent there, because I think that this development project dovetails really nicely with what has been going on, and I think what the future plans are for the cultural district, including the Bull Mansion property, where we can, you know, really work to shine a light on this, the history in Bollesburg, the mansion that's there, the theater. I think we can create that ecosystem of, you know, arts and theater and craft, you know, in this case, craft beer and other drinks. And so, I just think that there's a nice synergy between this, this project and the cultural district, which I think is very important to the township. In addition, I did want to mention too, just to give you guys a thumbnail sketch on sort of where we are in the process, obviously you know we're here for the sketch plan, but as part of the corridor overlay district, we have gone through a traffic impact study and have met the requirements of the township on that matter. We actually generated a robust data set during the course of that traffic study, which took seven, seven to eight months, and so we've, obviously, we're all very comfortable, including the manager, that we're in a good position there as far as traffic impacts. Access, probably not so much of an issue, because we're in, we're not trying to get an HOP from PennDOT, we're rather going to access this development on Old Bollesburg Road, which is a township road. And so that really wasn't a major issue for us, for this particular project. And then the landscaping piece, as you can see, all of the subsets for that will be discussed tonight, as far as the landscaping goes. So, just a broad view then of the site. The interesting thing about this, this project is, we're really only developing a very small portion of the entire parcel, which is the Bull Mansion property. You can see 322. Now, this, the resolution on this slide's not that great, but obviously you can see 322 there, to the north. And what's nice too about this location, I mentioned cycling, so I think we have a real opportunity to, as you know, the bike path is on the other side of the road there, so people that, let's say, are riding their bicycles in from State College, or from Warner Road, like towards Brush Valley Road, will be able to ride their bikes on the bike path to Church Street, and then access the development and the taproom from Old Bollesburg Road, traveling westbound there. And I don't know if you can see my cursor on that, no, you can't. But anyway, I just wanted to give you an overview, you could see all the green space, and again, that's very attractive to us, as part of the location of this project. Now, if we zoom in a little bit closer here, you can see where, where the, the triangle where we can build is located, and this is based on the rights of way and the setback requirements, both PennDOTs or the state, as well as the municipality. I want to also bring your attention to the three buildings there. We've got a shed, and a garage, and a gatehouse, and those have historical significance to the society, so they've asked us to keep those buildings as they are existing. So again, I think that goes back to also the, the preservation, trying to accomplish that goal, to preserving the history of, you know, of Bollesburg and of this particular property. And again, you can see the cemetery on the right-hand side. So, you know, we're going through, there's a lot of limitations here that we're dealing with, and we were really trying to shoehorn this thing into a pretty small area, but we feel like we've got a good plan that accomplishes that. And again, we've been willing to sort of push through these limitations, because as I mentioned before, we're so keen on this location for this particular development. Okay, so that's, that's sort of my introduction to the project. As I mentioned before, like, if there are any questions, I don't know Amy, if we want to ask questions throughout the course of this. Does anybody have any questions to this point, before I get, give Tim?
What do you mean by the gatehouse?
So, the gatehouse is the building to the south there, and there's, originally, that house was important for the property. I'm not sure where exactly it was located, but it was actually moved, I think, at the turn of the 19th century.
Oh, really?
And moved to this location. Bob probably shed some more light offline on that, but it has historical significance. And it's a resident, it's been used as a residence. But for this particular plan, we aren't going to move forward with any kind, using that as part of this development at this time. Any other questions? Okay, so right now, I'm going to turn it over to Tim Deal, who is our civil engineer, and has been working on the land development phase for us. And I would encourage everybody, I think, to probably just look at, I mean, you can look at the screen, or you can just use your hard copy of the plan that we provided to you. So, Tim, do you want to, can you hear me?
Yes, I hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, absolutely. So do you want to just get us up to speed on, on the, the site plan, as well as the lighting plan, and the stormwater plan, please?
Mark, absolutely. Great introduction. My name's Tim Deal. I live in Camp Hill, Pennsylvania. I'm principal engineer of HD Engineering Solutions, based in Camp Hill. I've known Gordy and Laura for 30 years, we went to Penn State together, Gordy and I went to high school, middle school together, so I'm excited for them, these guys, for this project, because I know how dedicated they are. With that said, turning to sheet one, you'll see two views, where it's one being the site plan, and the other being the lighting plan. I'm going to speak a little bit about both, starting with the site plan. So as Gordy mentioned, of the 34.9 acres of the Bull Mansion tract, this little triangular piece is roughly 1.1 acres. And as you can see on the site plan, we have a very limited building footprint to deal with, with the setbacks. And coupled with maintaining those existing buildings, it's kind of chap, was a challenging project, to get the right dimensions of the building and be able to park it effectively. So what we ended up with is roughly just shy of 2,500 square feet foot building. That's the shaded portion. On the south side of that will be a covered patio, but I'll let Laura and Gordy show you their elevations of that, so I won't discuss the building much. From a site plan perspective, it's pretty simple. We're just utilizing a new access point to Old Bollesburg Road, where all the customer parking will be placed. We'll have 25 proposed spaces, there'll be a trash handling area, and then for the existing residents, we're just going to utilize the existing garage for that parking. So there's actually 27 parks required for this space. We have 25 off-street, and we're utilizing the garage for two of them. So, pretty straightforward plan. I noticed they have some exciting nuances when you walk into the building, but I'm sure that'll show up on your elevations. So, just with respect, Gordy did mention when the corridor overlay district, but we're also in the, the main zoning is the cultural district, which this eating and drinking establishment is a use permitted. With that said, I'll turn to the lighting plan. Again, this is something that was required as part of the corridor overlay requirements of the zoning ordinance. They really just want to light the customer parking area, as the photometrics really don't go south beyond the footprint of the building. I think they're going to use some subtle bothered type lighting in some of the areas, and then in the parking areas, some decorative pole-mounted lights, just to try to get some effective photometrics. And again, we will be submitting this as part of our land development package, to ensure that it meets the requirements. I think Gordy used a local guy to put up these photometrics, but this will be coming forward in the land development package. So I can answer any questions you have on this sheet before I move on?
Is everybody clear on, like, you mentioned the waste area, and the parking, and the ADA. Any questions about comments?
You mentioned pole-mounted lights. How tall are those poles?
They're going to be 16 feet, as they're proposed right now.
Is that a standard street light height?
No, that's shorter. I think most, like, if you see a shopping center pole, that's like a 30 footer.
Okay.
So these are, these aren't going to be like, these are going to be decorative, first of all, I know, and
Right. There are streetlights along, in the village, and I wonder if they will be a similar height or taller?
In the village?
We can check on that.
Like on the dime?
Yeah, they'll probably be a couple feet taller. Because they're probably what, 12 feet down the
Right, so a little taller.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, like Tim said, I mean, our goal is to do things as, as tastefully as possible, and not just create like the standard dime a dozen parking lot look, but obviously, we want to have adequate lighting for, for customers that come in at night. And I think the plan would be to, to have the lights turned off when the establishment is closed, but have sort of some dim lighting around, that would be important for security of, of the establishment.
Great, thank you.
I'll just move on to sheet, the second sheet that we, that my office prepared, and that's just a conceptual grading, and then a stormwater concept. So, the left side of the panel is the grading plan, the natural conditions of the topography, everything kind of drains from 20, 322 down to the southeast corner. So the north is facing up, so everything's kind of draining down. There's two inlets that collect everything from this portion of the property, and a little bit of the adjacent cemetery property. And there are a couple of inlets that collect runoff and pipe that across the western side of Old Bollesburg Road, and it enters, it both entered like the same, the same corridor, which eventually is piped directly into the, the stream, which is actually unnamed tributary of Spring Creek. So it doesn't have any special protection, but it is a, it is conveniently located for discharge. And so with our concept, what we're planning to do is, and that, that's, if you look at the second panel, you'll see our stormwater collection facility is at the, at the front driveway there, where we do a trench drain that cuts off runoff and dumps it into that existing inlet number one. Then our plan is to collect the rest of the impervious area that we can, including putting gutters even on the existing buildings, and then in combination with some trench drains in the parking areas, channeling it down to a shallow impoundment. I'll call it a rain garden, roughly about a top, from the top of the berm to the bottom, it's like a three-foot impoundment, but then you'll have like a freeboard for whatnot, and that'll eventually discharge to the inlet at the lower corner of the property. We sent these plans in just before we got infiltration testing done. So I think there's going to have to be some tweaks to this plan. I generally like to keep it the same as far as the location of the rain garden, the collection facilities and everything, but we might be looking for some relief from some of the infiltration requirements due to very poor rates that were perked in the testing, and the fact that we actually have a seasonal high water table in this area, which I guess would be no surprise in the proximity to the creek. So, we're in discussions with the township engineer about how to address these items, but I'm confident we'll come to you with a plan that, that will work. It's fairly simple, it's a very small drainage area, about an acre and a half, so it's just dotting the i's and crossing the t's to everything to the township satisfaction on that end. And that's all I have, if anybody has any questions for me.
I do have, I'm Kent Baker. On the discharge from the impoundment area, the detention pond, where does that discharge to?
I'm sorry, what?
Where does, do you have a, do you have an, you said you mentioned you have a, an inlet somewhere at the low end of the site?
Gordy, do you have that plan up on the?
Yeah, I do, I do, Tim, yeah.
I think it's So you're pointing out inlet two to him?
Kent, right, right here, in this corner, there's, that's the point of interest, I believe. And then it flows under the, the road, and then into Blue Spring.
Okay, okay, so, okay, so that, all right.
So there's actually a, it'll discharge from the, it'll discharge from the pond and go to that inlet. Into that head wall. So everything from this site really converges just across the western side of Old Bollesburg Road there at the corner.
And is that existing inlet, or is that a new one?
Head wall type, special, but they'll, they'll box it some sort of
The plan indicates
Everything kind of shallow and undersized, and that's another constraint we're dealing with, for this site.
It looks like you have a new invert into the, that existing inlet? Where's that coming from?
That is from a trench drain there, that just cuts off the throat of the driveway?
Oh, okay.
Oh, are you talking the inlet in the middle, inlet one?
I was looking to inlet two.
Oh, I'm sorry. That got left over from an under-drain design that I had removed, so that will probably show back up on the plan we submit to the township. I think we're actually going to have to do a riser-type structure, and put at least an under-drain in to de-water the amended soils we plan to put in there, because we're just not getting any good rates. I mean, like, the neighborhood of .05 inches per hour of infiltration, which surprised me, because I had the Kaufmans go out there with a backhoe, and they dug some holes, and it rained really hard, and they went, and the holes were empty. But then we got our soil scientists out there, and I was expecting fantastic results, and lo and behold, it didn't perk, and there's a high water table. I guess they found some redox conditions in some of the elevations in there, and that's due to the seasonal level of, I guess, the, due to the creek being in such close, close proximity to the site.
But to be clear, we dug to four and to seven-foot depth, and when we dug, even at the south, the south portion here, this, you can see, this, this turquoise square indicates the location of the pit that we dug. And we also did some infiltration, infiltration testing up closer to this location here. There was, when we dug to that seven-foot depth, we didn't reach groundwater, we didn't reach bedrock. What's happening, the soil scientist believes that the variable water table is associated with this sort of very low and often wet area, and then depending upon how much rainfall we get during the course of a year, that water table can, can elevate. So that's why the southern part has Uh, so that's why the southern part, uh, has lower infiltration rates than the northern part because that water table doesn't get up that much further. Uh, the soil scientist told me that we weren't losing it. Actually, he, his initial observation after we dug the holes was that it would probably be okay, but after he got in there and started like using his, um, hammer in the profile, he was able to find like some, like Tim said, some redox features with some clay. So even though there was a bunch of what appeared to be sand and like bigger gravel chunks, uh, the, the predominant soil there, uh, was more of a clay. We thought it was originally like a loam soil. Um, in addition, the soil series that's mapped on this is a merril series, and that traditionally is one that has, uh, good infiltration rates and will, you know, is a quality soil that will drain well. And it turns out that in this case, um, perhaps these soils aren't matching that classic merril soil, or there's a, or there's a possibility that there's, um, different soil types on this little, in this little area of space, which, you know, could be. But really, the, the poor infiltration is more a function of that, of that water table that's, uh, variable throughout the course of the year or depending upon the rainfall.
So with, on that front, um, I, I don't know if the township engineer's there, but I, I'm probably reaching out to him this week to discuss some alternate, or maybe some even waivers of some of the recharge requirements since some of the, the, uh, the engineering aspects of the soil don't appear to be appropriate for infiltration. Um, even with that said, I know just talking to Gordy and Laura, uh, they, Laura's an excellent landscape architect and she can certainly plant something in this low area of water-loving plants that if we can't get infiltration, we'll try to get as much evapotranspiration as we can. So, just something we're gonna have to get past. Um, I've seen it on other sites, obviously, where you can't do infiltration, but I think we can over-detain, at least get adequate rate control, but I just don't think it's a classically good site for infiltration or recharge based on the engineering characteristics of the soil.
So it's safe to say...
And we'll have a, a, a report submitted with, by our soil scientist backing up our assertions.
But it's safe to say we'll utilize all of our options, correct?
Yes.
Any other questions on that? No? Okay. Thanks, Tim.
You bet.
Okay. Okay, next, I'd like to show everybody, um, get to the elevations so we can visualize what, uh, this development's going to look like, at least, uh, at this point, and these are preliminary, but we wanted to give everybody an idea. I have a movie I'd like to play. You see the elevations on your, on your plans there, but I do have a movie that we can look at as well. A lot of green space, a lot of outdoor seating, um, and I'll talk more about some of these elevations as we go through them, but you can see the kinda plant material we're, we're thinking about. As Tim mentioned, Laura is a, a landscape architect. That was, uh, that's a bonus to have someone in the family to help, uh, with this project. Um, so, yeah, one of the things you notice here is that, and you probably were, were wondering about, we're, again, we have to, to try to utilize some of these existing buildings, so, uh, we were going to, um, use this shed here as kind of like the entry point to the courtyard. I guess, should I just play that again or just go to the, yeah, let me just play that one more time so we can look at it one, again. Uh, where's the play? Yeah, there we go. So that'd be the front entryway. We've also thought about doing a, um, a living roof over that, those will be the bathrooms. But you can see that the windows and also the, um, the garage door here, we wanna create as much, uh, light coming in and, you know, we're, we're really, we think that ha, being indoors, even though it's a really small space, being indoors and, and still feeling like you're outside would be, um, really important. And we don't have any decisions made yet on what the siding of the exterior is going to be. I know that, that there are some, um, some rules in place as far as the corridor overlay district and what we can use, but certainly we wanna keep this thing in kind and make it fit really well with Bollesburg and with the, with the mansion property, so...
So, just as far as orienting this picture with the site plan itself...
Mm-hmm.
Um, where is the front on the site plan? This is the front, right?
This, this is, so you're just be facing south? So as you, let's say you, you're going down Old Bollesburg, Old Bollesburg Road, you make the left-hand turn in towards the parking lot, which is over here to the left, and you look to the right, that would be that, that view shed. You want me to go back to the, I'll go, let me go back to the, to the plan here? Um, so, if you can get my mouse up here, which, no, it's, there it goes. So if you were standing right here and you were looking in the southerly direction, that was, that was the view we were just looking at on that elevation, this, this direction.
So if you're standing next to the handicap parking area...
That's correct.
That's the front.
That's correct.
So that, that building you show on the right is that shed, then?
The existing shed.
That's right.
Are you guys remodeling those old buildings?
Shh, go ahead.
Well, they...
They look really nice in the picture, but they don't look like that real one.
Yes, yes, remodeling, yes. They, uh, in the, um, Bull Mansion, um...
The bylaws or...
The bylaws, yes. Um, so they require that they stay in, in the location that they are, but we are able to remodel them. Um, we're not proceeding with that at this stage on the gatehouse yet, because it's going to require a lot of work. Um, but for the shed, yes, it will be remodeled and, and be able to walk through it, so...
It's not a pretty block garage.
That remains.
It'll, it'll, it'll just be beautified.
Cosmetically.
And made to fit into the development.
So you guys won't be using it, the chapel will still be using those properties?
No, no, we, we, we have, we're leasing that, all of those buildings. We're just not gonna develop and utilize the gatehouse as part of the development.
But you could in the future.
Could in the future.
As what?
We don't, we don't know.
Well, it, it's residential at the moment, so it would most likely stay that.
Well, again, I was wondering about the parking regulations. If you're not including that, that makes your number of spaces go down, but if you do include that, then that would make your number of spaces go up.
Yes, we are including the two spaces that are existing with the property that are there now. Those are included in the count.
Okay.
The, all of the spaces for the tap room are in the front.
You know, I'm saying, now, if you use the, if you use the gatehouse, the old crummy house basically, um, then you would have to have parking spaces for that also, and I didn't know if that was included in your plan.
It is, yes.
But if you're not using it, you don't have to count it.
Well, Chris, if we're using it, I think counting it as a residence, and I think your question is if we move forward with any further development, then if it's anything but a residence, you're wanting to say that it is a park, meaning required, but if it maintains a residence, then nobody's required to be required that provided in the garage.
So I, I gotta clarify, as far as the existing two parking stalls, are you talking about the garage itself and the place just outside the garage? Is those two places you're talking? I mean, where are these two spaces?
Well, we have them in the garage, there is a driveway outside of the garage.
Right. So the driveway is one space, is, is that what you're saying?
I, I will take guidance on that. Um, we have two inside, it's a wide, it is a wide garage.
Oh, okay, so you're con...
Yeah, the plan was to put two in the garage.
Yes, and that's what our site plan shows.
All right. Yeah, I...
So this is in line with...
I would never, yeah, personally, I would never allow a garage to count as a parking stall because I, ninety percent of the garages spaces I see don't have cars in them, you know, but, uh, but anyway, that's, but you're right on the numbers, what you're saying.
Yes, and that's a question for when the preliminary plan is...
But you have, but you do have a driveway in front of it that you could park out and, you know, if your garage is full, you could park in the driveway out in front of it.
Yeah, and again, that's a question, we don't wanna get too far in the weeds here because this is not an official plan submission, which staff will be reviewing. And this is just a sketch plan, so this isn't intended to be...
Okay, I was just trying to fit, when you talked about two existing stalls, I was just trying to figure out where they were, so...
So I have a follow-up to the parking issue. You have a sketch of a bicycle, you made reference to a bicycle, but there doesn't seem to be a place for people to bike and park.
That will be a, a primary...
I cannot believe that, that, that I, that I, that was an oversight on my part, but there will be more than adequate, uh, places to park your bicycles here, yeah. Thank you.
Great, because I, I think if that's the target audience, you would wanna convey that by having that option available.
Absolutely.
That'll be clearly marked on the submission.
I have a question. So you're developing the site, are you going to be running the business or is, who's, where's the operation? I know this is kinda...
Yeah, so I've got, I've got a, um, a contract agreed upon, um, for head brewer and for a GM. Um, I will be overseeing as much as I can, um, and also working my day job.
And so this...
And I have two business partners and, um, you know, that, that's, you know, a part of the business plan, but yeah, I'm planning to do some work.
So you have long-term lease with the...
That's correct.
With...
That's correct, yep.
So I have a question that's more philosophical. When we were talking about our cultural district, were we ever thinking about that there would be a brew pub in it?
Parking area planned talked about for this property.
Well, yeah, the existing zoning, it's probably been in place since the seventies, I think, has always allowed eating and drinking establishments, so it's not been anything that's ever not been included. When the small area plan was done though, this particular corner and the land immediately to the west in front of the Bull Mansion, uh, was identified as probably the most likely location where we'd wanna encourage commercial activity along this part of Bull Avenue and Old Bollesburg Road. So I don't know that we ever talked specifically about a craft brewery, but it was certainly not ruled out, it was the area of the property that I think everyone agreed upon was the best suited to really serve a commercial, non-residential type use.
And I just, to that, hold on, to that question, um, you've heard me, I describe it as a tap room, and our plan is to offer kombucha, coffee, um, we will do beer in small batches, um, but, and, and it'll be, the beer will be the focus, but I also wanna point out when you say, and, and we do get a, a brewery license, you know, we apply for a brewery permit through the federal, federal government as well as the state, and it might even be called a brew pub, but we're not gonna be, there's not gonna be a restaurant there either, so we will be, um, servicing with food trucks, any kind of food. So it's, I guess, it depends on what you consider a brew pub, I mean, it's a small space and it's not a restaurant, so it's not like it's gonna be, you know, I don't know, I guess it depends on what you're, think of when you say brew pub, you know?
I just, uh, went up to the site wards on forty-five...
Yeah.
And, uh, if you go there on a Friday or Saturday night, uh, there's seventy-five cars, and they got music Friday and Saturday night, and it's a pretty popular place, and that's right off of forty-five. So it very well could be that popular, good for you, uh, but then we would also have to think that, um, twenty-six or twenty-six spaces isn't gonna be enough, 'cause he's got them coming all the ways down his driveway, all the way to forty-five parked off on the side. Have you ever seen that? All the way up. Have you been up there yet? And he's got thirty spaces, thirty-five spaces up there. Um, so that would be something the township should consider because, you know, you can't park along the cemetery road because on the right-hand side in most of the year, water is right even with the road. I mean, you couldn't do anything on that side, and they will park there. And then the other road is also wet on either side of the road, so biggest issue I see is how wet the overflow parking will be, well, having to do with your establishment, but people will park there, you know?
Well, there's plenty of overflow parking, number one. Number two, I think we could absolutely direct people to the correct overflow location. And then also with the parking spaces, that, those, that number of spaces is for the entire spread footage of the building, which is both the brew house and the tap room. So the tap room is actually only going to be, um, about fifteen hundred square feet out of the twenty-five, so it's, the brew house itself is a thousand, so...
Well, where I see the thing happening at these places is it's outside.
Yeah.
It's quite a crowd. I mean, he has music playing, he's got fire pits going, he's got eight or ten picnic tables out there, and it's okay because it's all onto his property, but as long as, um, Columbus Chapel lets him park up by the barn, I don't think then the road situation would be an issue. But I could see that happening, which would be good for you, but, you know, it becomes a Harris Township issue.
So, so what is your anticipated occupancy of, how many people do you think would be coming here?
Ins, inside to be, I'm, I'm sorry?
At peak times, when, you know, on a Friday or a weekend, when do you, what do you think would be the most number of people that would come into this place?
I gotta say, in talking to our draftsman, who was a, um, a code officer, making that determination, it's like, you only need three feet, so like, when they decide what the occupancy is, it's like, I mean, packed where people can hardly move, I mean, it's, I think he said it was like eighty, but I don't anticipate it ever being that much, I would think anywhere from thirty to fifty would be the most.
It'll be eighty. People's Choice, Memorial Day, football weekends, you guys are gonna be packed.
Well, yeah, the question was on the ins, was inside, and it's just, it's not a big space, it really isn't.
But I, I just lead into another question. You mentioned you did, you did some type of traffic analysis?
Yep.
So did, and I don't know what your distance is from your driveway to Bull Avenue, three twenty-two. Uh, what is that distance and did you look at what the stack, how many vehicles could stack there?
Eighty-three feet from the...
Eighty-three feet?
And I believe the requirement's seventy-five in the ordinance.
But what about the traffic analysis? Did you have an anticipation how, how far you would back up traffic?
We did look at all of that through the traffic impact study. We worked with Pendot and also the developer, and again, this is way in the weeds for a sketch plan, so I'm just gonna...
Well, it's in the weeds, but it's critical to the location of the driveway.
It is critical, but that will also be reviewed, Kent, as part of the land development submission.
But I've been, I think, I mean, it's one of the most important things of the sketch plan, is to know where you're gonna put your access, because if you put your access too close to Bull Avenue and, for instance, you start having a farmer's market type thing, cars are backed up all over the place, and they can't, you know, they can't get out, then, you know, then it would've been, had been better had you placed the driveway further back onto the site. That's all, that's, that's my comment, so I don't know if your traffic analysis got into that, but you should look at that.
We covered, uh, the location of the driveway and the distance from three twenty-two, and this plan meets that requirement.
We did look at, um...
From a zoning perspective.
We did look at with the traffic analysis with Pendot, we looked at what would happen with the road diet, if the road diet were implemented, we looked at what the, uh, impact might be when there is special events like, uh, People's Choice and Memorial Day, so that was all considered. Um, it's not anticipated that there's gonna be much of an impact until about year five, I think is when they thought with the growth rates that we'd have an issue, and we've agreed that they'll do another traffic study at year five, because one of the ideas was to close off and make Old Bollesburg Road a one-way out, like a right turnout, and we didn't, we didn't wanna, we didn't feel comfortable taking that to the supervisors right now, not knowing what the actual impact will be. So it was looked at, again, that'll all be discussed when the whole plan is submitted.
Okay, well, that, and, and that's, that's a big deal if you're gonna make it one way, 'cause I could see, yeah, if it's backed up so far that even cars coming in are having trouble turning left into the driveway, or people can't exit the driveway, uh, then it's just something that you should take a hard look at.
With the existing buildings, it's so difficult to be able to...
With the existing buildings, it's so difficult to be able to move that around, and the, the beauty of the site is the view out the back of the ridge and the, and the, you know, looking over towards Bollesburg. So, in some initial sketches, we thought about putting the parking there, but it just destroys the whole feel of the site, so, yeah.
I agree with, aesthetically, your location is the best spot, I'm just talking about traffic backing up.
Right.
Like, yeah, well. We can move on, I think, if, yeah.
This has been great, I think, especially for you guys, but again, you're coming in with your preliminary plan submission, and a lot of these are more technical type questions, which, after it gets through plan reviews and goes back to you guys, you'll have another look at it to see how these things might have been addressed. I think these were all great comments, though, that you all had.
Okay, so, um. Any other questions? There's that again. So, um, I guess we've kind of gone through this, and I just want to, um, yeah, I think we've covered everything for the elevations, right Laura? Do you have any comments on the elevations?
Um, no, not really.
Okay. Okay, so I'd like to move on now to the landscape plan, and, um, Laura, if you just want to touch on some of the key aspects to this, this is actually, you can see it pretty well on the screen here compared to the other plans, so.
Okay, well, I'll have questions about it too, so, um, you know, I sent a message to Todd when we were doing this, um, wondering about the buffering, because it is on the Bollesburg site. Um, obviously, the buffering is required up at three twenty-two, um, and then the cemetery has a very nice buffer already, um, but we have done that, used that in the counts. I did go with buffer B on that, um, cemetery wasn't actually a use, so I used church. Um, and then, there are, there are existing mature trees on the site, uh, it looks like we only need to take four out. Uh, there are a handful of dead trees that, um, need to come down to that are actually very dead, and I think one got knocked over in the storm last week, so, um, is starting to lean into the other one. Um, so I, I allowed for those, and then, um, the islands, um, but I just wasn't sure where we were going to head here with the, with the buffer elsewhere. So, I'll look for your guidance on that, and, um, there's going to be a lot more landscaping around the building as well, but this was the initial buffer planting.
I mean.
The buffer yard C would be everything on all sides except the cemetery. That's not a particularly, uh, hard standard to meet either. Uh, so, uh, I think, I think if you plan for buffer yard C on the other three sides, I think, I think you'll be fine there. And I, I would suggest that if what you're showing there is representative of what exists now, it probably far exceeds any requirement we would have as far as landscaping, so, uh, I, I think as long as you show your C on the other three sides, you should be fine.
Let's see now.
Um, I have to see at the top. So, do I need to actually place those around at the edge, or is it on the site?
Well, they, they have to be on the property, so they can't be in the street right-of-way.
Okay.
They have to be somewhere on the inside of the edge of the street right-of-way, and I, I think we either talked about this, or we emailed back and forth, and I indicated that they don't have to be in a particular, uh, design. You can group them as, as necessary for view sheds and things like that, so long as each yard is defined on the plan and it has the number of plantings that are required in each yard, but that's fine with us.
So the buffer yard can come back to the, to the building? Does it have to be?
I think what the regulations say is they're supposed to be in the setback areas. I think the plantings are supposed to be within the setback areas.
Okay, which is very big, and, okay, okay, all right, that's fine, we'll, we'll, I'll redo the count on those.
Oh, so you had the wrong counts before?
No, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't tally everything to be within there, so.
I guess I'm just.
A nice clear triangle for the driveway.
Well, you have to keep a triangle at the, at the bottom inner, bottom left corner intersection also.
Mm-hmm, it is, it, it, yeah, I'll, I'll look at this more closely, obviously, but, um.
I'm just wondering what we're buffering from, though, because you're basically buffering from the Bull Mansion, which we don't necessarily want to do.
May not always be the Bull Mansion either, uh, so you're, so you're buffering because that's what the requirement is for the, for the property.
Okay. Yeah, that, that's sort of where there's been that gray area, because again, it's the thirty-seven acre parcel. So, I was thinking that in this case, we would only need to buff, I mean, if you think about what a buffer is for, that we would only need to buffer along three twenty-two and along the cemetery, but that because you're going on the Bull Mansion property in these two directions, that there would, that, that requirement would not be.
I think the buffering regulations say. Is that the buffers have to be, uh, along all property lines, and along Bollesburg Road and along Old Bollesburg, on both sides there, th- those are front property lines.
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying. So it's because of the road?
Yeah, it's because, because that's where property lines are. If there was no Old Bollesburg Road coming down from three twenty-two, you wouldn't have to do any buffer on that side.
Okay. Mark, do you concur with that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so you're clear on that then?
I will figure out how to attempt to make that work. It's very tight on that side, there's really nowhere to plant. What do you do when there's nowhere to plant?
Well, then you have a problem, because that's in zoning and we can't wave.
Is there any view into the options?
No.
Not for buffers.
So, when you say it's tight, are you referring along the main, so where you have the first driveway coming in, or?
No, with the three existing buildings. In there, there's a, there's a large, large existing tree, uh, that takes up a huge root system, yeah, and here.
You can't see that.
In here. Oh, you can't see that.
Are you pointing at something?
We're trying to.
Trying to.
There we go, there we go, there we go, Laura.
Okay.
So you're talking about in here?
Yes, yes, and now, down around the front of the gatehouse, you know, we could add more up, up in the front, I, I suppose a little bit more, but that is, you know, completely blocking the view of everything in and out and the front entrance.
So, we want to surround this thing with a bunch of plants, is that, trees and plants, all around it?
So if you want to turn it that way, feel free, but I, I don't think that's, uh, I don't think that's how we'd look at it, no.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
Bob, can you come up to the microphone, please, since we're not seeing it? Thank you.
I guess I'm confused, again, I'm Bob Cameron, the director of the Bull Mansion Museum, so this is a contiguous property with the Bull Mansion. And so, the fact that there is a road going through there, you're saying that's what defines for the buffer? But again, it's a.
Say is that the, you have to provide landscape buffer along property lines.
But that would not be a property line.
Well, it certainly is, because the edge of the right-of-way is a property line. You don't own the road.
There's an easement, no, there's an easement going through it, but that's not a property line. A property line designates a separate property. This is an easement that the township has, taking the road through, through a common property. Otherwise, if that was the case, then everywhere where there's a, uh, homeowner that has property on various sides, you're saying those would be individual property lines, but that's not how you normally look at it in real estate. So I think that's something you may want to go back and reevaluate.
No, I don't think I do, because I, I, I think I know what the regulations say, and I, and I'm stating them correctly.
Okay, so you're saying correctly that this is a separate property and separate property lines?
No, I'm not. I, I didn't say anywhere where a public street created de facto subdivisions, in fact, there's case law to the opposite. It is one property on both sides of the street, but you don't own the street, the township does. So those are front property lines on both sides of the street that have to be buffered on this side.
It's a property line on the street frontage.
Pardon?
It's a property line on the street frontage that has to be buffered.
So it's not an actual property line?
Sure it is.
The street is a property.
Just help me then, because I've never heard, you're subdividing a property, so you're saying you can have a contiguous property that has separate property lines? I've never heard of that being used. Pardon?
You have ownership, but that doesn't mean you can't have multiple property lines that within the.
But they would be done separate plots, and they would, at the tax office, you would have separate entities.
It's not the way it works, sorry.
No, that's not.
Pardon?
It's not the way it works. Uh, the definitions in our zoning ordinance indicate that a front property line is any, any property line that is parallel to a street, be it public or private. So, the property line on three twenty-two is a front, or on Bull Avenue is a, is a front property line, Old Bollesburg Road going north-south's a front property line, Old Bollesburg Road going east-west's a front property line.
Okay. Well.
Very untrued.
Thanks, Bob. We, we did, we did, um, yeah, go ahead.
So, because the use on that corner is residential, intending to stay residential, does that require buffering? Because I, I, I had thought that the, that the house itself didn't require.
Now, the only, the thing that's requiring the, the buffering with what you're proposing is the fact that you're proposing a commercial use in a commercial building, uh, on this property. Since you're, since you're, uh, since you're proposing development now, even though you're not proposing anything for the residential structure, that's why this regulation is triggered.
So the residential gets folded in, like there's no, because we have a line of development where we're stopping, I mean.
Well, I don't think the residential. If you're, if you're not proposing anything new residential, I don't think the residential really has anything to do with it.
So they wouldn't have to buffer around the residential?
You don't have any additional requirements becau-, for buffering because of the residential structure, but in those yards, you have to provide buffering.
We had a discussion with Todd early on in this process about, about, um, what was, what was considered, because you've got, at, you know, point, the property is on three roads, like what, what's the front, what's the side, what's the back? I mean, originally, we were wanting to, you know, expand this thing to the east, but Todd, we, you decided that, would you just clarify that one more time, please, for the group?
Sure. The, the zoning ordinance defines what front lot lines are, what side lot lines are, what rear lot lines are. Uh, the front lot line definition is what I described earlier. Uh, the rear lot line is the, the line that runs parallel to or within a certain, uh, angle to the front property line, and a side property line is anything that's not a front or rear property line. So the, the question from the coffins was, why can't we call the, the common property line with the cemetery a side property line? And my response is, based upon the definitions, it runs almost parallel to Old Bollesburg Road as it runs north-south. So by definition, in the ordinance, it is to be classified as a rear property line.
Got it. Okay. Thank you for that. Um, I would do want to comment one other thing about, and then, and then we can wrap it up, but the, um, I was in touch with, with Mark, um, and also my good friend Trish Meek about, we understand that, you know, you guys will be vetting this for, um, you know, sidewalks and, and bike paths, et cetera. So, we understand that's part of the next, next step too, when you guys look at this more, more, more robustly. So that's all we have for tonight. Um, yeah.
I have one question on the, the buffer, this is the one, uh, next to, between the parking lot and the cemetery. I don't want to sound like a NIMBY, but this is my future backyard.
If you have the last plot.
Check the per, per capability there where you can.
I don't know how, how, how close you are with the grading plan, but a lot of those, you know, those trees are very mature, so if your, if your parking lot gets too close and you do very much grading in there, it could cause some damage to those trees. So, that's something I assume you're going to be looking at very closely.
We have been. The, the front grouping of trees are evergreens, so they're, they don't go out as far, uh, the root systems aren't as, as wide as, um, some of the maples that are in there. We have the ones that we feel would be an issue marked for removal, that's, uh, there are, there's one in the parking area, um, and then two in the tap room, and one back by the rain garden. They come in, the rest are, are on or over, uh, just at, they're directly on the property line, so.
This tree off above. Bull Avenue, what, are those existing? The three big ones.
Oh, these?
Mm-hmm.
These three are?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
Those are on the cemetery?
That, yeah, uh, I didn't relook at those, but Tim had those on the original survey.
I don't think those trees, those aren't existing there, I don't think.
They're not?
They have crabapples going along, so they're aesthetic trees, larger trees come down.
Okay, the, yeah, that's in front of the cemetery, so I'm not sure exactly what is there. There is, there is a very bright sign there.
Yeah, that, that's right, I have a question about this. So there is a sign, it looks like it's, it actually looks like it's in the PennDOT right-of-way, it's on cemetery property, and the light's on twenty-four hours a day. So, is there a, well, not, no, not during the day, but it's on all night, is, is that?
Yeah, on the billboard?
Yeah.
Yeah, th- those billboards predate our regulations, so there's not really anything we can do about that. If the billboard goes down and somebody puts up a new one, they'll have to follow the lighting regulations that affect that.
So we could just ask the owner to turn it off at night?
Or, or buy a BB gun.
You did not just say that on a televised meeting.
Any other questions? Comments?
I have a question about, two names, Bull Beer Works and Bull City Brewery?
Right. So, so the corporation that we formed is called Bull Beer Works, um, Bull City has been the working title for the brewery, but that's not been determined yet.
Seems a little.
A stretch. Yeah, there's been no.
To use the word city in Bollesburg.
No, no decisions have been made. So we will be doing business as something else, perhaps. Yep, thank you. Yep. Thanks for everybody's time, appreciate it. Thank you, Gordon and Laura, Tim.
Might I just, another comment?
Sure, come in.
So just, a couple of additional, uh, things about this. So, when I looked at this property, as you all know, we're in the process of trying to, uh, restore and, uh, bring back a lot of the, the Bull Mansion properties, which is actually forty-eight acres, uh, contiguous properties there. One of the things about this, you may not know, uh, that property, this little gatehouse, as we call it, the gatehouse was actually put on logs and rolled down, it was part of the coachworks. So that was Logue's House, um, that made the carriages here in Bollesburg, so an extremely historic house. Um, that's one of the things, but as you all, and someone pointed out, you have a nineteen-fifties, um, block garage, you have a falling down shed, and so I've estimated, uh, in going over it, it would take nearly two hundred thousand dollars to restore those buildings. And that was one of the things from a, uh, economic standpoint, looking at what they're proposing is to what I consider one of the biggest eyesore's on site, to be able to restore that. And also, it would bring much-needed funding to the Bull Mansion. So, it looked like it was a win-win proposition, and then from a historic standpoint, it's just coincidental, the fact that this is how the Bull started. They, of course, had the first tavern, which was on the King's Highway here, and they had the newest tavern, which is now Duffy's Tavern. So the Bulls were very big in the brewing business at the time, but, uh, again, thanks for the opportunity to say something.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on. Again, thanks for coming, everyone. To item B here, and the residential zoning strategy, which we're picking up again after four months or so. Yes, four months or so, uh, where we are on to other matters for a time. So, Mark, you want to walk us through this, please?
So, back last year, the Planning Commission began discussing some additional amendments to the township's residential zoning districts. Um, and you spent several meetings kind of talking about development potential within those existing districts. And, uh, at, at one point, I think it was in February, uh, you asked staff to move forward with trying to put together some type of a, uh, hybrid district that might permit all residential uses, and we could look at maybe applying that district to some other, um, some existing R-one properties in the township. So, it took Todd and I a little bit to kind of remember everything we had worked on after that meeting, because a lot has happened since. But we had started working, working on this immediately after the February meeting, and, um, kind of came to the conclusion that it was going to be difficult to make a district that would literally allow for all uses, all residential uses, and apply it to some of these vacant R-one properties.
and apply it to some of these vacant R1 properties without having some negative impacts to adjacent parcels. And it really felt like we just didn't have a strategy of what we wanted to allow where. But I feel like with what we heard from the Planning Commission, we had somewhat of an idea of what you might have been interested in doing. So we put together this concept, um, update strategy to get some input from you, and then to determine whether or not we're on the right track or not. So, you know, currently, we have the R1, R2, and R3 districts. Those are our three main residential districts. The village district's also residential, but that was updated recently. Uh, what we did is we put together a strategy to address those, those first two, R1, R2, and R3. And what we envisioned was a low-density residential district, R1, um, which would replace our existing single-family residential district. Uh, it would allow for the same uses. We wouldn't be looking to permit anything other than single-family detached dwellings and some other uses that we allow in our R1 district. And, uh, we don't really recommend that any new areas be considered for inclusion in this. It seems like keeping a lot of the existing R1 neighborhoods, R1 makes sense. Um, and maybe coming up with a new name, that might help, considering some stuff that happened with the rural. Might be good, you'd always have new names for new districts when you, when you come up with new districts. But anyway, uh, it helps avoid confusion. The, the next district, and this is probably the one that would be the hybrid district, so to speak, is the mixed-density residential district. And this one would be, um, a mixture of low and medium-density residential uses, in particular, single-family detached homes, duplexes, and townhomes. Um, and, and this is, uh, included with your memo, uh, in the agenda, were these two concept zoning maps. And what we did is we took several properties, and unfortunately, I, you know, being in this room, I realized we don't have an, uh, existing zoning map to point to. So I'm going to have to hold this up here in a minute and kind of show you some of the areas we thought might work for R2. But again, it would be single-family detached duplexes, or just a side-by-side, could be under one ownership, separate ownership, and then townhomes. So, units, again, side-by-side, not stacking vertically. Um, and then the, and we think that would apply to some existing R2 zoning districts, as well as maybe some that are already zoned R3. We have some that are, that are zoned R3 that are townhomes, and it could work there as well. Uh, and then the last, uh, district would be the high-density residential, which would replace our R3. Um, this would really only permit medium-density and high-density residential development, such as townhomes and apartments. This is where you could have the stacked units, where we already do have some R3, uh, uses. This would apply there, of course. Um, and, uh, we, we think this area could also potentially apply to some areas along three twenty-two that are zoned residential office. So we have this residential office district. It's only located in two locations in the township. And, um, aside from the, the corner out here of, of Bull Avenue, where you have the, uh, the medical offices, and then I'm, I'm not certain, is that just an office building on the Military Museum side? Uh, that'd be the only property that we might want to look at making commercial to just get rid of the RO zone, uh, since it's not something that's been heavily used. So, you know, we had some other ideas with this mixed-density residential district. In particular, the idea here was, um, you know, if we're putting this in next to existing single-family neighborhoods, we could get some pushback from folks being concerned about townhomes, duplexes, abutting their, you know, established residential neighborhood. So we were suggesting maybe we look at having some buffering, where you're required to have a, a, uh, any new development would have to have some single-family residential or open space or something around that common neighborhood boundary, just to act as a transition. Um, certainly, we think maybe landscaping and buffering would be a good idea around the perimeter of, of any new residential development, not just those in, uh, in this proposed R2. And then, of course, we've, we've been looking over the years at trying to revise our corridor overlay district regs. We've been doing that kind of slowly. It might be a good idea to include some pedestrian bike facility requirements in, um, these updated residential districts. So, I'll pull up these maps real fast and try to point to the areas where we made changes. So, uh, we'll start with the rezoning option one. So, again, this corner up here, this is the Bull Mansion Military Museum in blue. This is the area that's currently zoned RO. We'd be looking to make in that commercial. This area over here, on the opposite side of the Bull Mansion property along the forty-five, this is all zoned R1. It's several large properties, certainly including those in a district that might allow some higher density, um, would, would increase the amount of development potential. Uh, down here, we would look at putting, um, Ashworth Woods in the R2. Right now, it's zoned R3, but it's, it's essentially townhomes, so it makes sense to make it R2 to be consistent with that district. And then over here, this property is, uh, owned by Gary McShay, and I'm not... So I think the only properties that I'm showing on this map are Mr. McShay's properties as R2. This is a large farm field. Uh, and then down here, this area in here is actually all zoned RO. So we have a kind of a mix of R2, and then the R3 district would extend down here along three twenty-two, kind of across from where the new township maintenance facility is in the Bricks and Stones building. So that was the first concept map. The second one, variations on a theme, but Mr. Cameron Lefty may have been interested in this one a little bit, because we did take, we did take the portion of the, uh, Bull Mansion property that was identified in the small area plan as having some higher-density residential uses on it, as well as, uh, this parcel here that's actually off of Main Street that's owned by the... Remind me that, who owns that, Todd?
Oh, uh...
Biddle?
Biddle, yeah.
Biddle property down here, including them in the R2. And then over here, uh, the line of R2 and R3, we, we kind of put R2 to come down here to include. I'm not certain if that's the...
PennDOT stock.
PennDOT stocking sheds, so that they're not really impacted by anything. Um, but, those were the two. And these are, again, these are concept maps for a concept that we came up with of how we could move forward with maybe updating our residential zoning to kind of hit on some of the things that the Planning Commission had discussed at those previous meetings. So what we are looking for tonight is, is just your thoughts on whether or not we're on the right track, where you think we should go with this next? And then we, you know, based on your feedback, we'll come back in a future meeting with, with some more information.
Thank you, Mark. It's interesting.
Yeah. The buffer you were talking about, and I, I liked it, uh, I actually like number two better, but that buffer, what are you considering there when you look at, when you're going to, uh, allow duplexes or higher density, and you're going up against single houses? And you want to give them something? What do you, is there a distance that you're looking for? Or what are you planning on for that?
Well, I think from, from my own personal thoughts, I don't know, Todd and I've had a lot of in-depth conversation. To me, it makes sense to maybe, uh, require, you know, a hundred feet, so you could have a single, uh, you know, line of single-family lots, a depth, kind of a typical depth of a single-family lot. I don't, I'm not certain if a hundred feet or seventy-five feet or something, but just that you could accommodate single-family homes on the perimeter of any new development that's adjacent to existing R1, just to give that buffer. And we'd also be looking at having landscaping, too. So there'd be a little bit of both. But I think, you know, personally, I think you can have townhomes adjacent to single-family without any negative impacts. But I don't think that everybody in the community necessarily agrees with that. And this is a, a situation where we're looking to maybe increase the zoning density. It's probably a good idea to consider how to get community buy-in.
I'd like to see some pushback on that. You know, you're up there by the Ketter Road problem, you know, the R2 area, and you have those houses that go right up. Right now, basically, they're looking down onto fields and farmland. And then if you pass a development and tell them that you're going to be putting duplexes thirty feet off their backyard, you know, which would be the requirement, right? Thirty feet off the back?
Well, it would, it, we would have to determine what the new setbacks were in the new zoning district.
Talking about is the buffer, you know, if you were going to do something up against existing residential, could we write something into that to, you know, that, that would have to be a bigger buffer then for that piece of property?
I think that's, that was what we were trying to convey.
Really would change their, um, their backyard, basically, you know?
With R2 there, uh, in the, uh, next to the, um, cultural zoning area. Um, how would traffic work in that?
So, in this particular property here you're referring to? Uh, well, I think, you know, they'd have to look at probably getting access off of forty-five and also off of Main Street, obviously, if they were to, to extend the whole way down to Main Street. Um, you know, it's hard to say what the future could hold if someone would come in and just try to develop the Bull Mansion piece. If they look at trying to develop the Biddle piece along with the Bull Mansion piece. You know, we don't have any idea of how that would work, but certainly, they'd have to look at coming off of forty-five. I don't think coming back here from the Bull Mansion, as we just looked at there, past the, the new, you know, brewery that's, that they're talking about, would be viable.
Are you, and are you looking at densities then? I mean, like, the number, is that the next step would be to plug in the number of units in there and estimate what we'd look at as traffic and all that happy stuff?
Yeah, we didn't want to go too far down the road of getting densities and all these things figured out before we came back to you and got an idea whether or not we were on the right track.
Mark, you're on the right track?
Yeah, I, I do, too. It seems like there's some logic to how you're, um, proposing this. So next would be densities and other, other refinements. Any, any other questions or comments from volunteers or staff on this tonight?
I would just mention that the maps are concepts, so as we start putting together these densities, that's when we need to talk about where you feel the, it makes sense to apply this, based on what we come up with.
Okay, enough for now to move ahead? Great. Okay, let's move on, please. Um... We have, moving on from, uh, B to C, George Harrington has resigned, uh, his position on the Planning Commission. Jackie Shader is on by Zoom tonight. Hi, Jackie.
Um, she's not...
Maybe she's muted.
She's muted.
And she's agreed in concept to fill the...
I am muted, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and I guess pending, pending, um, Board of Supervisors, uh, okay on, on filling that, filling that position. So, um, Randy and Rich, thank you for continuing to be alternate members. Uh, and we'll look to recruit another, you have a lead on the third?
Yes, we do.
Alternate member? Great, okay.
We do need a representative to fill the Spring Creek Watershed Commission position that George is filling. So if someone's interested in doing that, I, I mean, those meetings are technical, and I think they're a little long, but, um, that's, that's what I hear about them. But if anyone is interested, if you want to let me know, we do need to make that appointment.
Bob? Thank you, Bob.
That'd be great.
You just want to fill the vision?
And I'm thrilled, I'm thrilled that George, George is going to continue to, uh, represent the township on the Center County MPO Technical Committee. His, um, written reports are, are great. So I want to keep, have those keep, keeping on coming. Okay, agenda for item, uh, excuse me, agenda for August, uh, we can move on to that.
Sure.
We, uh, have, I think, maybe some things from tonight's residential zoning that we might be able to move ahead next month, and then, uh, working with the Recreation Advisory Committee.
So, I think we're going to focus most of next month's meeting on that official map update. Um, because the Parks and Rec Committee's going to come. They've had sort of the preliminary information session that you had on the same thing. So we really want to get down to some brass tacks and talk about the procedures for how we want to move forward with evaluating that map. Because when we did it in two thousand and eight, and I've said this a bunch of times, we basically threw spaghetti up against the wall to see what would stick, and that's how stuff ended up on our official map. So, we want to actually turn that official map into a tool that we can use. Um, one of the things that the supervisors have, uh, passed back to staff, and you'll see this likely next month as well, um, is village district parking. And one of the things that Mark and I were talking about that we could do, because I think, I feel pretty strongly that the long-term solution to village district parking is we need to create some municipal surface parking lots, which takes the stress, thank you, Jeff, for agreeing, which takes the stress off of our existing lots, which are oddly shaped and developed two-hundred years ago. But, one of the things Mark and I talked about was, we actually could use the official map as a tool to identify some potential locations, so that then, as those properties were to come up for sale, we certainly could then say, oh, we have our special projects fund, or we have a pool of money, and this is a long-term plan of the township, this would all make sense. And, and I just think the more, more ways we can use that official map to promote, you know, better usage of the township funds as well and the budget, and that way, it's more transparent to our residents. So, I, I'd like to spend a good amount of time on that next month and get everybody on the same page. Yes, Jeff?
Municipal parking, they do that down in State College, and you guys would know more about, and how do they do that? I mean, obviously, the stores down in downtown State College have absolutely no parking, so that they pay into something if they're going to have a store that needs parking, and they do not have parking? Isn't that correct?
That's one way you can do it. I mean, one of the things, and, and I give Mark a lot of credit. Mark is a really smart guy in ways that I'm not so smart. And so Mark, the other day, we were talking, the three of us were talking in Todd's office, and Mark said, you know, we could actually do an analysis of the lots in the village and look at how many non-residential spaces they could potentially put on a lot, how many municipal surface spaces we have, and then how many on-street parking spaces we have, and make sure that there's enough parking allocated for any, any of these uses. I don't know that we want to go to a parking fee-in-lou because we don't, like, we don't have...
It wouldn't have to be much, but you're going to be asking the township guys to plow it.
But...
And so that comes on all the taxpayers.
Yeah, but we don't have, we're not going to put in, like, we're redoing, we're taking down the pole shed behind the township building, and we're going to redo that parking lot. And I was talking preliminarily with our engineer today, and he thinks we could probably get twelve parking spaces back there, which is huge. We've never had any parking for the township building, it's sort of exciting.
How about the lot off the alley?
But, I mean, when we look at that, we're not going to put in meters, and we're not going to say it's a metered space. We joke we're going to put a parking garage in, but we're not really going to put a parking garage in. So, and in the borough, they have a parking authority, they have a parking, you know, garage, they have a whole parking operation that we don't really have. You know, when I worked in, I worked in Elizabeth Town in Lancaster County, and we had municipal surface lots, but we didn't have, and, and Elizabeth Town's twice the size of Bullsburg. It's about twelve thousand. It has a central business district with a lot of businesses. And we had on-street parking on both sides of Market Street, and then municipal surface lots, but they were not anything that we had meters in, they were all free. You know, and the idea was just so that people could go visit the businesses. And there was a clear direction, um, for that central business district. And I think, over the years, everyone loves the village, everyone talks about the village, we've studied the village, we've had the village district study committee a million times. But I was talking to Frank today, Supervisor Harden, and I said, I just don't know that we have a clear vision, because he said he's gotten a lot of calls from people who watched the meeting last week and said, we don't want, you know, we don't want you to give away parking. We want people to have to have parking. We want this to be more of a residential area than a business area. So I think there's a whole visioning process that sort of needs to happen through all of this discussion. But it's all, I mean, it's, I, I think we need to get thoughts on the table. I've, I've suggested to the supervisors, and I've strayed off of the agenda for August, I apologize, but I've suggested to the supervisors that we consider creating a citizens committee, like we did with the small area plan, and let them come up with ideas, and let them vet it, and let them take ownership of the problem, and take, then create a solution that everyone can live with. Because it's actually a really complex and technical issue, as you guys know. And it's not something, you know, pre, it's great to say, let's go back to pre-two thousand and eighteen, but it's complete chaos if you say you don't have to follow use regulations within the village, because then you can have sixteen uses on a property that need twenty-five parking spaces, and they only have to give you four. So it's, it's, it's a little more complex.
So in two thousand and eighteen, what kind of regulations did we have in the village?
I'll let Todd explain those, because we had to deal with them.
Pre-two thousand and eighteen, we had the problem that, in the nineteen-seventies, the, the village district people, uh, put an artificial limit of four, the equivalent of four parking spaces on a lot. You weren't allowed to have more than four. At the same time, they did not create any language that said that you can only limit those properties that are, uh, providing four parking spaces to those uses that don't require more than four parking spaces.
Okay.
Um, and it was always interpreted that way.
You didn't have four spaces?
Yeah, so, nobody could ever legally provide more than four spaces. In two thousand and eighteen, after it was discussed fifteen times, since the early nineteen-nineties, we finally, uh, worked into our village commercial, uh, zoning amendment, parking regulations that are consistent with the rest of the township. You have to provide the parking in the ratio, uh, uh, for each property, like you do elsewhere in the township. There have been one or two properties since then, and it's all been in the last couple of months, who found that was problematic. And, and the one that had the most problem is it's a large building on a small lot, and all of a sudden, it's an emergency that all the parking regulations have to be changed again. So, it, it just won't work the way it did before.
So, and, and did we also, at that time, require that the parking spaces be paved?
We've always said that once you get to five required spaces, it's considered a parking lot, and parking lots have to be paved.
Okay. And we used to be only four, so you wouldn't have paved parking, okay?
Right.
So...
We used to not have impervious coverage limits, though, within the village. Or we had them, but we changed them.
Yeah, and that's become an issue, too, with this conversation, because when we reduced the impervious, uh, surface limit in the village from seventy to fifty, that created additional stress on properties that we're going to have problems providing parking anyhow. So, now... So now they might be able to provide five or six spaces, but physically on the site, but the impervious limitations now, 50% prohibit that.
So we'll be bringing that back, like, in September or something like that?
Well, so what the supervisors asked us to do at the meeting last month, or last week, was they asked us to take things back to the way they were before 2018, and to find a way to do that. So I talked with the solicitor the next day, and we can't, they tried to rescind the entire parking ordinance on a voice vote, which, thank the dear Lord above, you cannot actually do that. So I, it was not fun. But I talked with the solicitor, and what has to happen is, because it's a zoning amendment, and it's in the zoning ordinance, we have to bring it through you guys and then to CRPC. And I, we were talking about this, we spent, what, like, a good, probably, two hours last week talking about parking in the village, trying to think of, is there any way to do what they asked us to do? And what I said to them was, you know, if this meeting had been, like, a week or two prior to the Planning Commission, but not three days before the Planning Commission agenda, and they've, a couple of them have now said to me, you know, we should get this right, and we should get this interim point, I keep calling it the set point, which I know is not right, but call it, get this interim step right, because then we can take as much time as we need to. And I really, I really, after hearing the people that were at the meeting, they have very strong opinions on it, and then there's the other side, which Frank has heard from people, I really feel pretty strongly that we need to engage our residents in this discussion, not just business owners, but also residents that live in the village, because I think there's some concerns there.
I've been here, you know, been here a long time. We never really, before 2018, enforced our parking regulations, did we?
Yeah, we enforced them in a way that was not consistent with the way they were written.
Yeah.
Since 1970.
That's a good way to put it.
Which is why, as staff, we can't go back to that.
I understand that, and so we have to come up with another hybrid of that. I like the way we passed them with the businesses. I would just, like I said before, be a good idea if we had public parking, that businesses that require more parking, like a hair salon or something like that, would have the ability to get to the municipal lot somehow, but still keep our regulations the same for those. And I like that what they do downtowns and stuff like that, they pay in. Now, you can make it $20 a month, but you know what I mean? If you're going to be over the limit, then you are buying spots, or hopefully, open spots until those spots are full. And then I guess you would say, well, you know, the spots are full.
And I also think, once all sides of the story are fully discussed and hopefully understood by all parties, I think it, I hope it will be seen as this solution that we had in 2018 being less of a problem than what it's being labeled as now, because it actually did solve the problem.
Yeah, it's just, it's different than what we did for all those years, and I don't know how many people were paying attention despite the fact that we discussed that it had, this is how many public meetings.
Oh, yeah, I understand. I remember, I think I voted against it, because I just thought we were basically making a decision on that time, when we were talking about, you know, the water runoff, that we were saying, basically, we wanted a residential downtown, because I didn't see how you could possibly have a business. And that's why I voted against it, because there just wasn't enough parking to have a business. And if that's what we want, if we want the downtown to be residential, we should just go ahead and say that, then, because without the parking, that's what you got.
Yeah, in actual fact, it's actually kind of ironic that all of the complaints we heard in this room last Monday night were that we're taking away parking, we're keeping people from parking. The amendment we made in 2018 allowed parking, allowed more parking, made it easier to provide parking on properties. Interestingly, that wasn't discussed at all.
Is there some steps we can take sooner rather than later to form, or at least inquire about forming a Citizens Committee?
I talked.
Rather than waiting a month and then saying, oh, we want to do this?
Well, I talked with the supervisors after the meeting, you know, because they had asked me to look into this, and they want to discuss it at their meeting, August 9th. And they want to, we're going to try to have a draft of something together for them to look at, or some things to talk about more, August 9th. But I think, I think moving forward with the committee is the right idea, and I've heard from a couple of the elected officials who've said, I think that's a great idea, because that's a good way to get people to have buy-in.
Yeah, good. Well, just if we create that committee, I think it would be important that they be charged not just concerning parking issues, but also look at the impervious and look at the potential for providing a fee for parking, as all is wanting.
It would also be nice if, in conjunction with the supervisors, looked at a vision for the village. Because I mentioned to Frank today, you know, the vision that was set out in the 1970s, when they were so worried about coin-operated laundry machines, is a little different than in 2021, right? And we don't have some of the same, I think, concerns that we had back then, because the world has changed, but we do need to consider what we want the overall. Because in Elizabeth Town, our central business district, we had a central business district committee, and it had a very strong vision for what they wanted the central business to look like. We had our own Economic Development Corporation, used to go out to recruit businesses to come into our central business district, and they, you know, there was never a concern about parking, or did it fit with the character? Because it was, again, it's a bigger place, but it was, you know, we want to see those businesses. So I think we need to have that conversation.
Okay, we have some reports, I believe.
And that is my cue to share with you that the last CRPC meeting was in June, and you received a summary following that meeting on June 9. It was mailed out to everyone. We did not meet in July, and the next meeting is scheduled for August 5. And I'm going to be out of town, so I'm looking for someone from the committee to attend that meeting in my stead. I'm not sure who usually goes. Jeff?
I'll go.
Okay.
Great, thank you, Jeff.
The location is still not yet determined.
Oh, well, that makes it hard.
So just drive around and see what happens.
They're going to text me? Is it like a mission impossible thing?
Yeah, it's not been decided, I think, whether it be online or in person.
We'll let you know.
Just look for CNET, look for the CNET van, and then you'll know.
Thank you. So Jeff will attend in August.
Seven o'clock, is that seven?
Yes.
And we have a, thank you, Amy. And we have a written report from George, from the Technical Committee. I love his economy of language, and the little bit of humor he threw in there was just priceless. And unless there are comments or questions, we have that report from George. And we've talked already about agenda for next month. Will be in this room?
Yes, next month, you'll be here.
Okay.
September, you will likely be back over in the township building. We have our, if you haven't, get in to see it.
It's a new table.
We had a new table that was made out of a tree, they had a historic ash tree, across the street from the office, and we had the state forester come in, and he dated it to 170 years ago, which makes it the witness tree to the township, everything that grew up. So we had it, we had to remove it in 2018, it was badly damaged in the storm. A gentleman who removed it, Rafael Cologne, owns a place called Woodrich in Cogan Station, up by Williamsport, came, collected the giant slab of the tree, took it back to Williamsport, cut it, it took 18 months to dry it, and he's made us a beautiful table, which we just adore. And he signed the bottom of it, it's got the living edges. And he's making us a side table, too, for staff. And then while he was down delivering it, he's like, oh, can I have all these old chairs? I'm like, the ones from the 1970s? Heck, yeah, take them. Because that's what he does, he repurposes wood, and he has more of the wood left. So he said, if anybody, I have his cards at the office, he said, if anybody wants a piece of the tree made into something, just let me know, and I'll do that for them, and you can buy it from him. He's very talented, the table's fantastic. We've had a couple of meetings around it, and I noticed people are much nicer when you sit around the nice table. Todd doesn't, Todd does not agree with me.
I was in those meetings, no.
I wonder if there's anything from the Heritage Museum, you know, sponsor at the Heritage Museum who might pay for those and sell them as a fundraiser?
Yeah, I mean, I will say that he charges, he's an artist.
Yeah, sure. They're wonderful.
They're wonderful pieces, but.
Is there anything else to go over tonight?
Pass the zoning permits down.
Zoning permits are coming around. How about a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Amy. Second, and those in favor of adjourning tonight's meeting? Aye. Thank you, everyone.